Good morning. I'm Tarazumato, representing H D eleven. Today is Thursday, March twenty-third. This is the House Committee on Human Services. We're meeting in room three-two-nine, and this is the nine A.M. agenda. Before we begin, present in committee this morning, I'd like to say good morning to my esteemed colleague from House District Twenty, the Honorable Representative Kobayashi.
Really?
Also, also with us this morning is my esteemed freshman colleague from House District Twenty-seven, the Vice Chair of Health and Homelessness Committee, the Honorable Representative Takanochi. Good morning.
Good morning.
And to my left, my right-hand guy that on my left is my esteemed colleague from the Hu- from the House District Twenty-nine and the Chair of this House Committee on Human Services, the honorable and highly regarded Representative John Mizuno. Thank you, guys, for joining me this morning. We've got a few resolutions on the agenda, so we'll just jump right in. So we're starting off with H C R seven-one, and for expediency, I'm going to combine it with also House Resolution Seventy-two. So, opening us up, we have Leanne Gillespie, offered comments from the Office of Youth Services, not present. Next, we have Judith Clark, Hawaii Youth Services Network, offered testimony and support on Zoom. Is she present?
Yes.
Take it away, Judy.
Yeah, we are actually offering comments on this resolution. We recognize the needs of Hawaiian and Pacific Islander children and youth that are overrepresented in many of our service systems. However, we need to talk about the fact that compiling a statewide directory of programs that work with Pacific Islander youth and their families is only the first step in a process. The information is dynamic and changes frequently, so a system to update it needs will be needed. Outreach and awareness campaigns to reach potential users, both community members and service providers, are also needed. And to effectively reach many of our Pacific Islander communities which have limited English-speaking capacity, the materials will be need need to be available in multiple languages and formats that make them accessible. All of this requires time, funding, and dedicated staffing. So we would recommend an amendment to the resolution to require the Office of Youth Services to develop a plan and budget for doing this, and with the intent of funding the implementation of the system in the twenty-twenty-four session. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Judith. Would you like to also testify testify on H R seventy-two while you're at it, since you're here?
Uh, yeah, yes, we have identical testimony on that resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Up next, we have Cards Pintor, an individual in support, not present. Members, do any of you have any questions? No? Okay. Then we will be moving on to H C R seventy-two and H R seventy-three. Up first, we have Leanne Gillespie from the Office of Youth Services with comments, not present. Matthew Viola, the judiciary of the state of Hawaii, provided comments, also not present. And then we have Judith Clark, Hawaii Youth Services Network.
Aloha, Chair, members of the committee. I'm Judith Clark, Executive Director of Hawaii Youth Services Network. We are in support of the this resolution. It takes a village to raise a child, and the only way that we can effectively address the issues that lead to the disproportionate engagement with the juveniles. Justice system is to involve stakeholders at all levels within the government, nonprofit, faith-based, and business sectors, and particularly members of the affected communities and populations. I would note that Hawaii is already taking a strong stance in providing multi-sector collaborations to address the issue that have reduced the number of incarcerated youth by eighty-two percent since 2010. A couple of examples of this include the multi-agency partnership that recently received a Kellogg Foundation grant to create culturally-appropriate prevention and early intervention programs, and the work that we are doing with the Office of Youth Services and many other organizations on the startup of the Safe Spaces for Youth Pilot Project that was established by the legislature last year. We hope that the legislature will continue to provide financial and other support for these important and effective efforts. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you. So we also received testimony and support for support from Matthew Viola and Cards Pintor, also an individual in support. Let's see. Judith, is your testimony on H R seven-three identical as H C R seven-two?
Yes, it is identical. We support that as well.
Okay. Members, do you have any questions? No? Okay, moving on then. Boy, this can go quickly. Moving on to H C R one-thirty. Up first, we have testimony and support from Hawaii Youth Services Network, Judith Clark. But then we we've received testimony and support.
Sorry. We'll stand Hawaii Youth Services Network will stand on its written testimony and support. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Moving on, we've received testimony and support from Catholic Charities Hawaii, Shelley Niles, not present. Let's see. And we've received, let's see, is Lisa Von Sekona available here this morning? Okay, individual in support. Please go ahead. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for having this hearing today so we can speak on behalf of this support this resolution. I'm also here on behalf of Epic Ohana. We stand on our testimony that you've received and available for any questions.
Thank you. So we've received testimony and support from a number of individuals and some late testimony as well. Is there anyone else present that would like to testify on H C R one-three-zero? Seeing none, members, any questions?
What happened to the department?
Because they didn't come. We do have their testimony, though. Okay. So moving on to eight, House Resolution One-three-one, we have Judith Clark of Hawaii Youth Services Network in support.
Hawaii Youth Services Network stands on its written testimony and support.
Excellent. Thank you. Shelley Niles from Catholic Charities Hawaii in support. And Karen Worthington, an individual, also in support. Is there anyone else here to testify on House Resolution One-three-one? Members, any questions?
Judith, are you are you there?
Yes, I am.
A few years ago, we went through a big deal change with the Families First program. Do you remember that?
Right.
And I'm not quite sure why we are trying to do a working group now to, quote, "identify, design, and recommend transformative changes to the state's child welfare system," unquote. Didn't we just do that a few years ago? With the Families First program?
Frankly, I'm not the best person to talk about this because I haven't was not part of the Families First initiative, so I don't know exactly what it was designed to do. And as I said in my testimony, I think there are a lot of really good collaborations that are already established that are working on reducing the overrepresentation of Hawaiian and Pacific Islander youth in the juvenile justice system. So I don't know that a working group is actually needed, but I do know that the groups that are trying to work together do need ongoing financial support and staffing that the legislature can provide. The funding for years two and three of the Safe Spaces for Youth Pilot Project was in bills that I believe have died in this session. And so there are real concerns about the ability to continue the to actually implement the pilot as we are planning in year two.
Could I answer? I'm the author. Could I answer the question?
So I think the issue is not, you know, the willingness of people to come together because we are actually doing that. The the issue becomes the resources and staffing needed to support those efforts.
Right. Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Judy. It's the amount is approximately eight million. The reason I I'm the author of the resolutions, the reason I had this is it's a backup. We had the House bill that failed to make it out of the House. The Senate bill's move Senate bill's moving. We passed it recently. And we blanked out the amount, but we made sure we put eight million plus in the committee report so our money committee knows. But just in case, just in case this bill dies, either not passing in finance or dies in conference, if we have a resolution, we can go forward without the funding, but at least prepare to have the structure built in. So this is just a protection mechanism. In case the bill dies, this is the backup plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Any further questions, members? Seeing none, okay, we'll be moving on. We're moving on to H C R one-three-nine, H R one-four-one. Up first in person, we have Denise Iseri Matsuba, testifying in support. We have we've received comments from Director Betts, the Director of Department of Human Services. Let's see. We've received testimony and support from Nico Leverance from Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center. We've also received testimony and support from Keili Lopez of A A R P Hawaii. And testimony and support from the Institute of Human Services, Connie Mitchell. And for H R one-four-one, we've received testimony and support from Denise Iseri Matsubara from D B E D T, H H F D C, in support. And further more comments from Director of Human Services, Director Kathy Betts. A lot of this testimony is essentially identical. A A R P, Keili Lopez in support. Connie Mitchell from I H S in support. And Jessica Gassman, an individual in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on these two measures? Seeing that, seeing as we have no testimony before us on these two, members wish to make any comments or have any questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on. Boy, this goes so quick. Okay, so up next, we have H C R one-nine-nine, H R two-zero-three. We've raised testimony, we've received comments from the Department of Human Services, Director Kathy Betts, received late.
Yes, received late, but received.
Outstanding. Please come on up.
Petermore Peterson, on behalf of the Department of Human Services and Director Kathy Betts. We stand on our written testimony and comments on both H C R one-nine-nine as well as H R two-zero-three.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us, Doctor. Moving on, we've received testimony and support from Catherine Chen, the Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights. We've received testimony and support from Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks, Nicole Wu. And we've also received late testimony and support from Dr. Reni Soon, Hawaii ACOG. And testimony and support from Amy Agbayani and Pat McManaman from Hawaii Friends of Civil Rights. Testimony and support from Thaddeus Pham, an individual. And late testimony from Allison Kaneshiro. Let's see, have I missed anybody? Oh, yes. Testimony and support from Stacy Kuhn. Is there anyone else who I may not have called who wishes to provide testimony on these two measures?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, please go ahead.
Hello?
Oh, there we go.
Oh, thank you so much. This is Pat McManaman submitting testimony on behalf of Hawaii Friends of Civil Rights. My apologies, my neighbors are doing a lot of work in the background. So, you know, we stand on our testimony as submitted. I would note that the Department of Human Services had concerns as to the due date in the report, and I think we set an early due date. We're happy to move that back to twenty days before the start of session if that is of aid to the department. I'd also like to notify you of one error I discovered. I don't think it's material, but I did want to disclose it in the resolution itself. So the resolution reported that twenty-eighteen data showed that undocumented immigrants in Hawaii paid forty-one-point-eight million dollars in taxes. In looking at the footnote last evening to that particular report, which was specific to Hawaii, in the footnote, it indicated, oh, the end note, excuse me, it indicated that that also included COFO residents. So what I did this morning is I backtracked in the most recent data I can reliable data that I could pull up was from twenty-seventeen, and that was from the Institute on Taxation and Economic Policy, a highly recognized and reputable tax organization out of Washington, D.C. And in twenty-seventeen, looking just at the undocumented population in Hawaii, they reported that state and local taxes amounted to thirty-two-point-three million dollars. So it's not a huge difference. It's less than ten million dollars, but I did want to, not asking for an amendment, but I do want to disclose that on the record.
Thank you. Any questions, members? Yep, Representative Kobayashi.
Hi, Judy.
Hi.
Are you aware that it looks like at least twenty-five states provide services to children regardless of immigration status?
During the process, excuse me, Gina Moore Peterson, Medquest Administrator, Department of Human Services. Thank you for the question. They're in the they either have or they're in the process of applying for that. It is a new, it's relatively new. It's in the last year or so where a few states have started to move in that direction. You know, we we already do cover most. This would be the those who don't meet the immigration, their citizenship status or their immigration status. So there's a but we're but yes, we are aware of that. It is general funds only, as you likely know. But those states have decided to move in that direction or are considering it. Not not all of those states have passed the legislation.
When you use the word "most," what does that refer to? Most children meeting?
Most children in the state would be have access to health insurance. So it's a it's a relatively small number.
And would that include most children regardless of immigration status?
There is a number of children who, as an example, the DACA folks who were brought here, that 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 particular group of kids do not qualify for Medicaid based on their citizenship status. And so that's an example where that I believe that the proponents of the bill are attempting to fill that gap.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have follow-up questions.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Representative.
Doctor, so the question was, too, in addition to DACA, is it also the COFO migrant kids that are covered?
No, they we we've covered the COFO kids and pregnant women for a number of years, so it does not include them.
So besides DACA, what other group?
If they're here, I hesitate, you used the word "legal," but if they if they're, you know, they've overstayed their their visas or things like that.
If it's illegal aliens.
I think we we work on on that word, but yes, yeah.
And just another question. For this gap group of DACA or possibly people that aren't complying with the
Right.
citizenship or or visa laws.
Correct.
Do you have a ballpark figure of how much this would cost the state in general funds to cover?
We don't. I believe that's what this this resolution is asking us to do. It's to research it and then come up with that figure.
That's it. Those are the questions I have. Oh, last question. I'm sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
So if I'm a DACA kid or a person, what if I were to go to a federally qualified community health center and walk in, like K K V or what have you? There are there is a chance that they would provide medical services.
They're required to provide services to anybody who walks in the door.
Thank you. Thank you so much for answering my question.
And per the suggestion that the that they're open to the, you know, the the later date of twenty, you know, the more standard when a legislative report is, that would be acceptable to us as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair. Okay, now moving on to our final duo, H C R two-zero-three, H R two-o-seven. Let's see. Up first to testify, we have late testimony from Department of Human Services, providing comments.
I we stand on our testimony of both the resolution and get the H C R and H R often comments.
Thank you, Doctor. Next, we have Hannah Greenwood in support. Valerie Eschelman, Behavioral Analysis N'oka Oi, Inc., in support. Christine Walton, also from Behavior Analysis N'oka Oi, Inc., in support. Kristin Koba-Bert, Hawaii Association for Behavior Analysis, in support. Come on up. Good morning, Kristin.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Kristin Koba-Bert, on behalf of the Hawaii Association for Behavior Analysis. We are a nonprofit association representing providers of applied behavior analysis services in the state. Really here today on behalf of registered behavior technicians. It's our most frequently-used service as a provision for children with autism and our lowest-funded code. You'll see in our written testimony, as well as the written testimony from the Council of Autism Service Providers, that the Hawaii Medicaid rates are significantly lower than a number of states and lower than some of the other payers, such as Department of Education within the state, which is really causing a hardship for us to be able to serve Medicaid beneficiaries. And I'm available for any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on, we have Joseline Miller, representing Biata. Come on up. Come on down. You're the next contestant.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I am Joseline Miller, on behalf of Biata, and I stand on our written testimony for both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Is there anyone else wishing to testify on either of these two measures before us? Anyone on Zoom? No? Members, any questions? Nope. Then I believe we, we've received testimony and support from a number of individuals. And seeing that no one else is present, either in person or in Zoom to testify, and our members don't have any questions, we're going to take a brief two-minute recess to confer before decision-making. Thank you.
Resuming the nine AM agenda, this is the Human Services Committee taking up decision making. Mr. Chair, are you ready to do this?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
All right then. So voting on HCR 7-1 as well as HR 7-2. I appreciate this excellent resolution from Representative Gonradan. I note that the Office of Youth Services has testified that they do not have funding to perform the suggested reporting. However, their mission is to provide programs and services, so they should know who providers are. And as such, I suggest that this resolution request the task as it seems, as if it should already be done. And I suggest that we pass this as is. Mr. Chair, for the vote please.
Thank you. Recommendation by the Chairs of Past Unamended. Chair and Vice Chair, both vote aye. Representative Bolari?
Aye.
Representative Iligan?
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi?
Aye.
Representative Takanouchi is excused. Representative Nishimoro?
Aye.
Representative Garcia is excused. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Voting on HCR 7-2, HR 7-3. I'm going to accept the comments from the District Court. Judiciary suggests that this committee passes measure with the following amendment, that all references to District Family Court of the First Judicial be changed to Family Court of the First Judicial Circuit. So I would like to pass these two resos as amended. Mr. Chair, for the vote please.
Yes. Chair's recommendation passed with amendments. Members, we're going to be voting on both of these resos because they are concurrent. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, noting the excused absences of Representatives Takanouchi and Garcia. Anyone voting with reservations or no? Sina, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Excellent. Moving on to HCR 130, HR 131. I appreciate this excellent resolution and it is my recommendation that we pass it as is. Mr. Chair, for the vote please.
Thank you, Chair. Recommendation to pass unamended. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, noting the excused absences of both Representatives Takanouchi and Representative Garcia. Any WRs or no votes? Sina, Madam Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Excellent. Moving on to HCR 139, HR 141. So Tanif is under Section 401 of the Social Security Act. And as such, my understanding that such federal fund usage for capital improvement projects is not permissible per 2 CFR, Part 200, Section 200.439. I appreciate the introducer, who is Majority Leader. And I really want to pass this for her. So in speaking with her, she has requested some changes. And so per her testimony- And so per her testimony, I, oh, oops, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one, there we go. Per her testimony, I'm requesting that we amend the measure, given the different Tanif and HUD missions and requirements. We're going to amend the section beginning on page 2, line 14, to read as follows. Be it further resolved that the Hawaii Congressional delegation consider redirecting unspent Tanif fund to HUD to be used in the state where the unspent Tanif funds originated for the purpose of developing affordable housing. So Mr. Chair for the vote as amended please.
I want to thank you for your fine work on this, on the both resolutions. Recommendation by the Chair is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. With the excused absence of Representative Garcia, any member wishing to vote with reservations or no? Sina, Madam Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Moving on to HCR 199, HR 203. Per testimony, I would like to amend this to require a report due date of December 15th to allow complete reporting and the time necessary for DHS. So Mr. Chair, as amended.
Okay. Recommendation by the Chair is to pass with amendments. Noting the excused absence of Representative Garcia, any member wishing to vote no or WR? Sina, Madam Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Chair. Moving on to our final measures this morning. HCR 203, HR 207. This is an outstanding resolution and it is my recommendation that we simply pass it as it is. Mr. Chair for the vote.
Yes. Recommendation passed unamended. With the noted excused absence of Representative Garcia, any member wishing to vote no or WR? Sina, Madam Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Outstanding, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.